Okay, this time I'd like to call the planning board in for October 17th, 2022 to order. At this time, I have a 6:30 hearing, but I do not have a quorum, and we get a member that will be calling in a few minutes. So I'm gonna proceed on to our regular meeting and get some of those issues taken care of, and then when he shows up, we'll do the hearings. Okay, on the regular meeting, a call to order.
Patrick Kerlan.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Carver Torrioso.
Yeah.
Jason Parra excused, Tom Carrigan excused, Dean Valier excused, John Souza.
Yeah. Okay, plans, I don't have any. Site plan application for 259 and 273 Lancaster Street, map 484, parcel 10 and 11, battery energy storage system. That'll be scheduled, it's gonna be a special permit.
It's gonna be a special permit. Let me calculate if we have enough meetings Mondays between now and November 7.
We don't, it's held for 11:21.
11:21. We have a 6:30 open.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded for 6:30 for site plan application. Having further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Special permit use application for 259 and 273 Lancaster Street, map 484, parcels 10 dash 11, battery energy, excuse me, storage system.
Make a motion to schedule for 6:31 PM on 11:21.
Motion made and seconded for 6:31 on November.
21st.
What was that?
21st.
21st? Okay. Any discussion? Here now, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Deviation from approved subdivision Woodlots at Matapod, subdivision 58, adoption circle lot 15. This is just a.
It needs to be advertised as well, so.
Right. It's gonna be the same day?
You go to the 21st of November.
November 21st.
6:45.
6:45?
Six forty-five.
Six forty.
Six forty.
Six five.
Can you get seconded? Okay, 6:40. Any discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. City council petition, 5.1 and 5.2 I'll have to skip. 5.3, city council petition, 6:23 read, "To amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles."
We need to give up.
Yeah, I think I got 6:40.
Yes.
Oh, that's right, that's why I skipped that one, yeah. Okay. Communications, Day Street subdivision Sawyer Way, New England Land Company, request estimate for remaining work on Sawyer Way and subsequent bond release.
Okay.
Got a fellow sit on that, isn't it?
Yeah, board, there's a letter in your packet. We went over this at the last meeting because I've received it the day of our last meeting. But essentially, we have an attorney on behalf of the developer who's asking us to allow $40,000 to pay for the remaining work on Sawyer Way. We do have $80,000 in a bond, and we don't know for this project, and we don't know the cost yet that it would take to satisfy those conditions, whether it be 40,000 or whether it be 80 or whether it be 120,000 or we don't know. So they did also request that we get an estimate to see how much it would cost to finish the final work. So the next step, I think, in order, and John can back me up on this, would be to get an independent consultant, as we've started doing, to do an estimate as to how much it's gonna cost to do the remaining completion of the work, and they can decide, write them a letter and let them know, you know, ask them if they want to finish the work, and if not, we can exercise the bond or not the bond, the financial assurance that's in the treasures that the shareholders will need to support the work.
As I understand it, they've already authorized us of the cost for the estimate to get the work done will come out of the 80,000 that we hold on the passbook account.
Yeah.
So that passbook account, so we hold 80, so we need a motion.
We don't 80 in the passbook.
We hold 80, right.
Not with bond.
It's not a bond, it's a passport. We don't give bonds anymore.
No, I understand, I'm just.
It was kind of interesting because this letter.
They haven't paid.
Said they had a bond, they hadn't paid the bond, so, but we don't have a bond, we have a passport.
We have $80,000.
They're a passport.
And a passport, so.
If I understand this right, they're gonna pay another 40 on top of that?
No.
No, they're asking to have, only pay 40, and they probably want the remainder to be returned to them. But we don't.
We have 80, so, we already have 80, so it doesn't make, you know, it's a question, because they're gonna get the balance of the work we've done, because I don't think it's gonna be that much to finish it, so.
Souza, remember calling in.
Okay, good.
Hi, Dean.
Aye, I'm here.
Just to fill you in where we are in the meeting, we moved down to communications. Do you have your packet? Did you get your packet in the mail? We had some issues with packets.
Oh, yeah, you didn't have it with you.
Yeah, you brought it to me.
I'm pretty fine, you know, yeah, it's okay.
Just listen in.
Just listen in.
I don't think I did, but I can go online and.
Yeah, just listen in. We're on communications right now, and then we're gonna return to the hearings subsequently.
All right, I'll pull that up and I'll be ready.
Okay.
Okay.
So for the record, Dean Valier has joined the meeting at 6:38 PM.
Okay, good. Just so, what I need is a motion to allow a list to go out to request quotes for Sawyer Way, okay? And if the bond, if the quote is under 5,000, then we can release it for the work to be done.
Have we used McCarty Engineering in the past? After we compared estimates as to which firm is gonna be the most reasonably priced? So I recommend we use McCarty again unless their price is.
Well, we have to send it up.
That's right, so we send it out to them. They come back with a quote, and then we'll make a decision.
It's over 5,000, you have to get multiple quotes.
Yeah. Okay?
Okay.
So that's a motion made and seconded?
True.
Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all favor say aye.
We have to do roll call now because we have someone on the phone.
Oh, that's right, roll call, forget about that.
Patrick Kerlan.
Yes.
Paul Weiser. Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Carver Torrioso.
Yes.
Jason Parra excused, Tom Carrigan excused, Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes. Motion passes. Other communications. We got a letter, we, if you know, we've been going back and forth with the building department on some site plan work that hasn't been completed. One got done, one has not been touched, as far as I can see, and we've been asking for a letter or some action since April. We finally got a letter that went out.
Last week?
Last week. And that's after we went to the mayor, and the letter stated that he was sending the letter out because he had a complaint from the planning board. Well, I'm sorry, the situation is that if you have, if you don't follow the site plan, you're against the site plan, and you have to take in the, you have to, you know, it just can't be allowed. Or if you get, in the other case, if you have 10 or more parking places, it requires a site plan. And that's in the ordinance today. So these are just standard things that's required. The letters have finally gone out. We have not heard anything back yet, so we're waiting.
No submissions?
Okay.
No new submissions?
No, no, okay. At this point, I'll go back to the public hearings, okay? And I'll first want to open public meeting for a site plan application for 15 Willow Street, map 318, parcel 1, trucking terminal. And at the same time, I'll open the public hearing for a special permit to use application for 15 Willow Street.
115.
318, parcel 1, trucking terminal. That hit.
For the record, building engineering, the adequate property, just to be clear, is 115 Willow Street. So this is.
It's not 115, but.
In Orientin, this is Route 117, and Willow Street is the signals that signalize in this section of Willow Street heads in an east-west direction in the existing building that is now A and B Tire.
You pull that on the line with Spargo, so we can see it over here.
We can see it.
Okay, okay.
The people at home need to see it too.
Yeah.
So the existing building is approximately 10,000 square feet. There's about 3,000 square feet of office space within the existing building, 3150 square feet. Currently, there's about nine parking spaces on site, and the rest of the site is used for open storage, vehicle parking for some of the trucks that are associated with the A and B Tire service business. So they have on-the-road service trucks and tow trucks, et cetera, to repair, do repairs on the road, basically. That's being, that part of it is being phased out, and the owner is now looking at leasing the building to E.L. Harvey for storage, essentially of their, some of their trash trucks that they'll be using as they expand their business into the area. So what we looked at on the project and in the site review section of the letter we submitted, there's a special permit that we're seeking relative to the use, to expand a use of transportation service facility in, as well as it being called or referred to, depending upon what part of the definition of the zoning you go to, as a trucking terminal. So that's really what the use ends up falling into that category, although it's not one of these 300,000 square foot, you know, warehouse distribution centers. That's not the intent. So currently, right now, the areas that are paved, essentially in this area right here, or there's a concrete pad in the back, so this is the area that's currently paved in the site. This area really is roadway grindings that have been packed. There are some areas of pavement throughout the area, so it looks like, it looks like, if you walk there, it looks like, and I can feel maybe you have a comment on that, but it looks like they made a paving company had a little bit of extra paving someday and came in to pave a couple of areas here and there. The intent is that we're gonna clean this whole area up. There are some paved areas in here that will be returned to grass, same thing around the perimeter edges to provide, just to kind of clean up the area, make it a little bit better, kind of confined where the trucks will be going, where the vehicles will be going, et cetera. So as part of proposed use, the use would be based, the parking count will be based upon typically the number of spaces per square foot, depending upon the use. So our parking requirement for the project would be per employee is what we look at along with party officers. So E.L. Harvey is looking at having approximately 30 trash hauling trucks on the property. So with 30 trucks, you're gonna have 30 employees coming to the site to leave their vehicle on site, get it to one of the trucks and be dispatched throughout the day to various locations to track and move them all.
I wish we had a small.
So on top of that, we also have, part of the A and B Tire use will be continued on the property, maybe about five or six spaces. So what we've done is reconfigured the spaces along the front. They were numbered, but they weren't really compliant with current zone. So we're gonna adjust the parking along the frontier here, add some curving along the top of the slope. If you notice the top of the berm, I'm sorry, the top of the bark moat slope, you can see rivets coming down, and that water is kind of washing that away all the time. So we'll be adding some curving in that area there, basically to get the water to be directed to the existing catch basins as part of the site improvements in this area. The pavement would be extended into this area here, and then this would remain as roadway grindings, and eventually could be paved. But we did look at that area as being paved in the drainage review for the project, but right now, it's anticipated to be cleaned up like the roadway grindings. But that may change, but we face, if it could change, we look at it as paved. Concrete pad would stay. The areas of storage behind the building would be eliminated, and access would be allowed for additional truck parking in that area. So essentially, we're looking at the E.L. Harvey space being in these areas here for their larger trucks. We have those spaced as 25 by 11 versus the 9 by 18 typical passenger cars. There would be also additional A and B storage back, I'm sorry, truck storage back. There'd be three storage spots for the A and B tire business, and then the remaining 11 spots would be for the E.L. Harvey.
Those are also the larger?
The larger trucks, yeah, larger trucks, larger spaces, yes. Same in the back here, there'd be an additional five. So the total number of space we have available is 16, 21, 32, plus the three gets you up to 34.
So you could have 32 large trucks.
34.
34 large trucks.
Right. So we have, they're anticipating 30, it's not gonna be 30 day one, it's gonna ramp up over time depending upon need, but 30 is what we're kind of talking about with them. And Jeff has more information on those details. On top of that, what we've done is we've taken the area that was being utilized as storage in existing paving, and what we did was we're gonna re-strike that whole area, clean that up, and that will provide a total of 26 spaces in this area, and additional four in this area. And on the front, we'll have 11 spaces. So our employees are anticipating on the site, both between A and B and E.L. Harvey would be approximately 39, and we have 41 spaces shown on the site. So with the changes to site, we end up with a net decrease in impervious area, which is a positive. The other changes that we're doing, we're gonna add some landscaping. One of the waivers that we're requesting is relative to the number of trees that would typically be required to install on a project, mainly because of the fact that it's pretty much, it's a lot of industrial areas around it, and it has, the limits are already set on the property with what is happening. We are adding some landscaping on the left side of the building. Basically, that's basically to allow the directional flow of the truck traffic and the employee traffic to be in this direction here. Little bit of beautification on this side, once again, more grass in this area here on the side. What we've done is one of conservation comments that had come up from the response comments for conservation was they requested that we add more trees, but the issue is we have this wide power line even going through the bowl of the entire property, essentially. So we can't plant trees underneath the power lines because of National Grid requirements. So we've asked for a waiver for the number of trees planted. We are gonna add additional shrubbery components in this area here to kind of maintain the directional of the direction we're heading in this direction or activity that might be coming out this direction. But then also some shrubs and landscaping along the west side of the building. We've also asked for a waiver relative to the requirement of a landscape architect, and typically what we have done on the projects is as the site work gets done, it's gonna really depend upon what's available for nursery stocks, especially with the supply chain issues that we can have. So that's an overall review of the site. The utilities are gonna stay the same. There's no additional water sewer needs for the property, electrical, and I don't know if it has gas.
Gas.
It has gas, okay, that'll all remain the same. And then we did review the traffic in here as well. We also, Cargisson of the request by the police department for some sort of a traffic study. The existing use is not dissimilar to the proposed use. You have a bunch of trucks in the area that will dispatch depending upon deliveries and vehicle emergencies throughout the day. It's gonna have more employees at this location, so there is gonna be an increase. We're acknowledging that. But what we're looking at, it's in our narrative submittal, along with, I've also prepared a common response about it to all the comments that were made by the various departments. And this is something we can go over tonight. I know typically it was running through these, but I'll carry these out and.
But we didn't get the, yeah.
Right, you're getting it right now.
So Bill, so, but one of the vehicle storage in this piece on the right is still, it's in the, that's all the.
Oh, yeah.
Now, just another question, are the active lines here on that side where you're building underneath?
We're not building.
Oh, I mean, we are.
Yeah.
The active lines are overhead?
Correct.
I mean, as they are laying out, just double checking.
Yeah, we also will.
Is there issues with that, any issues with that?
There shouldn't be, yeah, we have to have some contacts and conversations with National Grid through, and I'm not sure if they're gonna, it's gonna rise to a level of an ascent because it's already being used that way, but we have to do.
What are the heights of those trucks?
Oh, they're way up, yeah.
They're at that long.
Yeah, they are.
Well, no, I know, I'm just making sure of it. So that really stays as it is except for cleaning it up.
Correct. So one of the things we're gonna end up developing as part of the project is they have this thing called a SAG plan. And what you do is you do profiles along the power lines. And you show them where the SAG is in the line, and when you locate that, you shoot it, you know, reflectorless. And what you do is you take the, put the date, the temperature, the time, the humidity level, and all that information, submit that to National Grid. What they do is they have a system that evaluates the lines, how much power is going through that line, and the temperature that was, you know, the ambient air temperature, and then from there, they can calculate how far. If it was done in February, they're gonna be up higher because it's colder. If it was done in August, they're gonna be down lower. But if it was a cool day in August, then maybe there wasn't a lot of electricity use, so they might not go as low. But if it was 105 degrees in August, the day that we shot it, those things might come way down. So they calculate that, and the span can be five, seven, 10 feet sometimes, depending upon the length of the line and how much power is going through it. So that's something we'll have to deal with National Grid on.
Okay. What about buffers?
There are no existing buffers.
What's behind, I mean, the zoning behind it, right?
This is, this is a, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but it's industrial as well.
It's industrial.
It's open between here and here, so there's nothing really changing. I think this is another building here. There is a section, there is a wooded section that exists between the properties right in this area here. So that already is existing.
But I mean, the buffer, I mean, so the Seraphini property, what's the zoning on that and what on the top?
The Seraphini, I think it's all, I think this is all. It's all industrial, yeah.
Oh, it's all industrial?
Industrial.
Yeah.
It's all, okay.
It's all industrial.
Right. Right. I believe, I believe this is.
His house is there, sorry.
Right, I believe that, I was gonna say, I believe there is a house over here.
His house is there.
Yes, but I don't think that there's a house on this property here. Okay, I think it's a driveway between our site and their site here.
Okay.
Okay. And that's, that house, I believe, is on the corner of Francis and Will. And then I think there's another couple houses on the other side as well. But the buffers that are there now are what is gonna remain. The use, we try to take the trucks and pull them away from that side of the property and just have the suggestion, what passenger vehicles on that side of the building? So that's kind of how this came about.
But they all come in the same entrance.
Come in the same entrance, and they park back in this area here. They'll have service days in the building for service, okay? But the majority of employees, the office employees will probably park up in this area here, and then the truck employees will park actually, I guess, in this area here in this, here's the spaces here, so.
Okay. Want to go through your comments here, and then.
Okay.
And we'll order up the audience.
So the, we received the comments back from the various departments. The Estancia had no comments. The Board of Health had three comments, first one, what the trucks must be periodically cleaned to reduce odors. Jeff may be able to speak to that, but I believe that these are all trucks where everything is inside versus open containers and the like. So, but whatever condition relative to clean the vehicles is required by the board, we'll pass it on to the tenant. No idling of vehicles. We acknowledge that that is not a typical requirement for trucking areas. So that will also be passed on to the client, I'm just going to say, the tenant. The exterior needs a good cleanup, lot of loose trash, Willow Street excessive tires being stored outside. Water collects in tires, leads to mosquito breeding. Prefer tires to be stored in a container outside. So our response, which we found that day, was that the exterior grounds of the site were in process of being cleaned at the time of the inspection. So Phil was actually out there cleaning things up. But the majority of the tires in the site will be removed as the business transitions from the tire distribution to the trucking. So a lot of the areas where the tires were in the back of the building and some areas over here, those areas are not gonna be earmarked for parking and/or access to the building in a different manner. So the site relative to tires is gonna be reduced 80%?
80, 85%.
Yes. So that use on the property is really gonna go down. And I'm just gonna ask Phil, will most of the tires be stored inside anyway that they're?
Yeah.
So I think that that, I think that that issue, Phil was actually cleaning the site when.
Phil, the tires that you were talking about that were left out, that they were talking about, they were actually scrap tires, and they're going into a trailer they go up to me. Okay. They're gonna get recycled out there.
So for the record, that was Phil Arson, the owner of the property.
Okay.
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 So then, building department had no comment. Conservation, I would rather see the 11 trees normally required for the number of spaces, but if this requirement is waived, a little trouble, anything for suffice. Our response to that is that that actually was already on the plan in this area here, and the power lines as well, along the side of the building. D W had no comments, fire department had no comments, and then the comments from the police department, please conduct a traffic study. So the response to that is similar to what we wrote in the letter, the H and V narrative. As this site is with an existing trucking use, being transformed to another trucking use, a traffic study is not warranted. Information regarding estimated vehicle reception to be provided in this annual letter to the project is a council total of 155 vehicles per day.
And you have to stop at that point. How many trucks do you have today?
That I have?
Yeah.
There's probably been sometimes 25, 30 trucks in and out of there during the day.
The rest of it I have?
Yeah.
I got 10 trucks.
You've got 10. So we can count 10 as yours, and then the others are customers.
Correct.
Correct. That's customer traffic, okay. I'm just trying to clarify that because customer traffic and, you know, just so we know in our mind.
Well, at this location, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think any customers come here.
Oh, not really.
Yeah.
I'm talking about current, A and B Tire.
That's what I'm saying.
I've been there as a customer.
No, this is not the A and B Tire site in Sun.
I've been there as a commercial customer.
Here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
With the truck.
Okay. All right.
I had to get tired for the toll, so I'm trucking. I went there.
So people do bring trucks there to be dropped off and serviced?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, yeah, all right. So I do, it's, so, so I think we're trying to separate the difference between the service.
I'm trying to get a feeling between service vehicle trucks that have today and highly strux that are probably gonna go out on a schedule.
Correct.
Okay, and then, and then trucks, um, I want to say conditionally larger, in general.
So, I'm gonna say yes to you. So the, the ten trucks that he has now, it's gonna get reduced to three.
Right.
Okay, and then we'll be adding thirty.
Thirty, that's correct, okay.
So.
Now, I'm just trying to get a feeling for the, the truck traffic there because there is truck traffic there today, there is an existence, you know, I have a general idea what that is. And then there's also, there's gonna be a new truck traffic.
Right.
The new truck traffic is, is a, a truck, but they're much bigger trucks, okay, and a different kind of truck, in general.
Yes.
In general, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, they're not, they're not tractor trailers by any means.
They're not tractor trailers, but they are, uh.
They're single, they're single.
They're ten-wheelers.
Ten-wheel packers.
Ten-wheel packers.
Yeah. Right, so, the. What we looked at, back to, back to the, uh, so what we looked at is that, we didn't look at what's there right now. What we looked at is when you got done, when it was up and running, with Phil having three trucks and them having thirty. And A and B Tire having office and, you know, Harvey having office. How many employees would you have bringing passenger vehicles and then the thirty trucks plus the three trucks? So if you take that in the post-condition, what I'm saying is that the one fifty-five is what, is what we're, we're projecting based upon I T E. Okay, what it is right now, we didn't get into that, we, we didn't review that part.
I realize that.
It might be, it might be it's a hundred and it's gonna go to one fifty-five.
But just eight than earlier indicated that it was similar. It is, it's similar, but.
But it's larger, yep.
What's like?
Absolutely, so the, what, what we don't know is what the increase is, okay? Because we haven't looked at, at the, um, at the, uh, the existing use.
That's right.
In, in, in the letter that we submit right now, what we looked at was a hundred and fifty-five vehicle trips per day, okay? And the split between the passenger vehicles and truck operating the site. Um, in, in the A M, the peak would be predominantly passenger vehicles as the employees arrive. And in the evening, the, it would be the, the same passenger vehicles as.
Well, they leave, right?
During, during the day, during the day, you'd have the trucks going in and out of the site, which would be more off-peak hours, okay?
If you get thirty coming in, thirty going out, you're gonna have the, that sixty, then you're gonna get at least one twenty.
The thirty, the thirty don't go out at the same time.
But they're gonna go out during the day sometime.
I'll let, I'll let Jeff, Jeff address that, he's at, he's at more, I agree.
They have scheduled hours.
And then, and then you're gonna have, and then you're gonna have some trips in, in between on the, during the day.
And do they empty all at the same time?
No, the way Harvey does it is they, they stagger.
Well, let's, let's, let's get a name put there.
Yeah, sure, what, Harvey is.
Harvey, your name and.
Attorney Avini for the applicant, one five one one five Willard Street, really, uh, oh, we'll see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what Harvey name?
Attorney Avini.
Avini.
Yep, so what Harvey does is they're gonna, they stagger the trucks in four or five, these, of these pre-shifts a day. So you're not gonna have thirty trucks going at a time, that's not the way they're in their shifts. So that basically is gonna be four or five, maybe six trucks going out, and then one or two hour delay, then maybe another four, then another delay, another six a delay. So they're not gonna have thirty trucks, you know, running all at the same time. It's just based on scheduling when they pick up and when they drop off.
How about coming in?
These are all containers, that's correct.
They're all, I, I understand, but.
They're all, they're all, they're all in.
There are all staggering times coming in and is there a, a limit at night when they come in and don't come in? Is there a shut off like at nine o'clock or anything like that?
From my understanding, they don't usually run past five o'clock.
But we don't know that.
Right, well, that's usually the, that's kind of the standard operating procedure.
These are all for containers?
Yes.
And so they're all empty, correct?
No, 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 they're not containers, no, no.
No, they're front-end packers.
Right.
Oh, they're front-end packers?
Yeah.
They load, they don't come back.
Exactly, yeah.
So they're loading their car pack.
They're not.
It's just like if you see on the streets picking up trash.
To, yeah, okay, well, they have a, they have a different, they have.
No, no, I understand, I understand.
Right, and then, then these, these, these trucks will go to the, the transfer station.
Correct, correct.
But there'll be no trash.
No, no.
They come in clean.
Yeah, there's no trash going on site.
Okay.
So they would go and empty before they came back to the site, because they're getting ready on the next day.
Okay.
Um, but, back to your, back to your, your statement about, um, the trucks going in and out. My question, meaning back to Jeff, is do they stagger the employees coming in as well?
That's what I understand it, yeah, because it wouldn't make sense that it'll all air and be paying them when they're sitting around.
Right, so, so I'm gonna correct myself on that, that.
Nine trucks.
The, 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 the number of employees that's coming in is gonna be staggered in the morning. And they, they, it may be more that they, they're closer together on the evening side because they're all down there around the same time.
Well, don't these trucks have a regular route to the, some? Please identify yourself and let me know.
Yeah, most of them do, yeah, yeah.
So they would have a regular route.
Different towns and different cities.
Okay.
And they have ordinance to go by, so they have to do their deal, come back, and every truck has its separate, um, job doing.
Right. Okay, so they add, so most pickups, that, that they're gonna be heading out first thing in the morning then, to do their route.
I don't, I don't think it's the majority of it, there may be more that go out early and then stagger lesser trucks later on, but I don't think they all got. What I'm, I'm, my understanding is that, what I've been told, they're not all gonna be going out first thing in the morning.
Okay.
Four or five different.
So I think, I think that the, let's think about what we see here in towns for trash pickup. They come to my house around seven fifteen, seven thirty in the morning, so that would mean the employees are coming in pre-peak hour.
Yeah.
Okay, the trucks are probably going out alone, it's also pre-peak hour and starting some things, and then there's another shift that comes in maybe around peak hour. And those trucks will go at peak hour, so it's kind of staggered that way. And at the end of the day, I, I would think that it, it might be that, think about it this way, they might have a route that might be in Orange. So it takes you longer to get to Orange, so you, you know, it might be that they come in and do the seven o'clock locally, but the guys coming in drive to Orange and they come back later in the day.
Right.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a moving target relative to where the peak is. But the point of the matter is that because of this, I, I was focusing on the staggered truck, general, truck trips. But obviously, in thinking about it, that's gonna also translate to staggered employee, um, trips.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So I think, I think as, I, I was coming up with somewhere a peak of around eleven or twelve vehicles per hour in the morning peak from the project, because we have, basically we have, you know, thirty, thirty, thirty-five vehicle spaces on the property. So that's, that will be everyone coming.
Everyone coming in though, right, so let's say you got twenty coming in, just a number, I'm not saying this. Then you got twenty going out.
Correct.
So you got flooding.
Correct, so you take, if you span out over four hours, that's, that's ten vehicles now.
Yeah, but I don't think that's over four hours, I think that's.
There had to be probably three hours. Or, or there might be the rush in the morning, if there's twenty trucks that go out in the morning, then twenty in, twenty out, so it might be flooding, you know, first off in the morning. And I understand how the rest of it works, because it could be bribes, uh, contracts as well, right?
What I see here, we're surmising on this, we really need the information from, from Harvey. You know, and that's part of the traffic study, and that they can give us the definitive, because.
Well, this.
I wanted to, I wanted to say something upfront, is that, yes, this is an industrial site, but it's also an industrial site where there were homes there. Okay, and Ross Street and the, and the neighborhood, and there are homes in that area. So I, it, it's not just, hey, they're an industrial site, no, they've been there before there was an industrial site. Okay, so, so if I'm gonna send of, of these buildings and what's going on, okay, I wanna make sure they're, I wanna protect them as much as I can. So that's why I'm talking about buffers, or, or something, you definitely, you know, and if that's a wooded site, that's not on their property, that's.
It's half and half.
The tap and half?
Yeah. Property lines over here, if it comes down like this, go down, this whole area is on their property and this over here is not right there.
Okay.
So I made it really not much of a.
No, no, but that, but that's somebody else's property.
Correct.
But that is all, that is all wooded, I know that.
This is wooded, this is, this developed, I believe.
And you got a ten-foot rise from Willard Street to the property line.
Right.
Just above, is that the banking here?
Yeah.
So that's about a ten-foot bank, yeah, you, because you gotta protect the traffic, I mean, you got a major commercial area down there too. So that's why I think, uh, again, the good idea on the traffic is important, you know?
Okay.
But.
We'll work on it.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Okay, good, you have anything else?
So the last comment was, uh, if the building is alarmed, please, please let's contact information responsible party available twenty-four seven with a police dispatch. And we just said that we would, we acknowledge that, I think that's.
Yeah, that's probably done anyway, okay. Okay, good, you have anything else, Phil? Okay, I'll open it up to the audience. You have any questions or comments, yes, Pam? Please just identify yourself, that's all.
I live on Vanessa Briani, I live at one forty-one Willard Street, which is on the corner of Francis and Willard.
Okay.
My property gets destroyed by trucks every day, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day as it is. There's so much truck traffic up through there, so much traffic coming from the factories of the workers getting out at one o'clock, three o'clock, five o'clock. There's so much traffic there. He lives on one thirty-five, which is right behind where they're talking about. I don't wanna smell trash. I don't wanna hear trucks beep 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 in and out all day long. Do they, are they there on the weekends? We put up with a lot in that neighborhood already for traffic. Willard Street is a narrow street. I've been trying since nineteen ninety-three, since I bought that house, to have trucks excluded from Francis Street because they destroy our property every day. Quarter or four in the morning, the other morning, bang, 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 what they do, they hit a giant boulder in his yard, the truck trying to go up a road that says no trucks. Lights in my window, in my bedroom, why do I get quarter or four in the morning? This is what we deal with, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
And that's going up Francis Street?
That's going up Willard and trying to get up Francis. Now, I have been trying to get them to exclude trucks from Francis Street so that they don't run into our houses. They put up signs that say no trucks, but it's a white background and the truckers say, well, I can go there. But they end up in our yard, facing our windows, pulling the rocks out in the road, destroying our grass. We put up with this already and now they're talking about smelly trash trucks, right outside our houses, noisy trash trucks. Beep 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 beep, all hours there, however long they're there. I think we put up with so much already. And the thought of that is horrendous for me, that's all I'm saying. It's so much already in that neighborhood with trucks and traffic.
Okay.
I agree with everything she said, I'm not gonna repeat it.
Oh, please identify yourself.
David Lima. I live in the house next to that.
One thirty-five.
Uh, I agree with everything she says, I'm not gonna repeat it. But when I add it, it is a zone industrial, but Willard Street is mostly residential, it's not, it's not industrial. And I don't wanna smell trash trucks right next to my house either. And there is not a wood line in between, it's like one's, one tree at a time, it's not like there's wood there.
Okay.
From his backyard, his fence, straight to there, there's no trees, there's no, nothing blocking that, is what we're saying. We have so much already, so much to deal with in that neighborhood and those houses on that corner where they wanna do all this stuff. It's horrendous.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, I have any other comments?
I, I'm, my name is Sheila Devani, and I agree with everything they say, I mean, we've been there for a lot of years, you know that?
Fifty's home.
Sixty years, sixty years, actually.
About fifty plus, anyway.
And we're ones that have seen this whole development come, you know? Now, we have big trash trucks coming, we hear them way off on one seventeen, come up the hill, around the corner, bang, bang, bang. Emptying and picking up and that kind of thing, you know, it's, it's a lot and, uh, I don't know, I just don't think that.
Do you have much truck traffic going up Francis over to A I S?
Oh, my God, yeah, we've got, yeah, I mean.
Try to anyways, they usually.
Not only the workers, but all the trucks that go too, you know, you've got box trucks go all, all the time, we've got traffic constantly, except on Sunday.
Okay.
And the cars going down with the music playing and, and that.
Yeah, I know, I know A I S and, and Francis Street is not this, but it's all part of the, the big picture.
Part of the problem.
Yeah, part of the problem, yes.
It's, um, there's a lot of consideration there and I'm thinking that if they're these big trash trucks, they're going up, we're gonna hear them on our property too.
Oh, yeah.
We, we're at the back of that property, but we're going to, in the lights and all that stuff, we, we see it from the, the trucks now, you know? We, we're up with it, we have to. Um, but if it's possible, I'd rather not see it develop, I just would agree.
Okay, yeah, well, we have a problem, it, it is, it is somewhat alone in that area, but we cannot define that. Um, but there are things that we can try to do to mitigate the noise and the operation. Okay, and that's what, that's what we're gonna try to do and, and the comedy what you have.
But have you been on Willard Street, I mean, you, you go on Willard Street.
I was by there yesterday.
It's unbelievable, the traffic that comes up and down that road, you know, not only.
It's a shortcut.
So.
Yeah, um.
I mean, there's gotta be another place to put these pickups.
I think, I think we have a number of issues here, um, that we're gonna have to address. Do you have, anybody else have anything else that they wish to, uh, and?
It's just that we wanna live peacefully too, in our homes, that's all, you know, I think we deserve that.
You know, being here, wanting to trash truck happen at the house.
Well, I, I know.
They're not gonna clean them.
That, that's why it's a sensitive thing, I'd like to do, uh, two things, I, I am, uh, gonna recommend that we have, uh, uh, go get the traffic study from, okay? Uh, to comply with the, the Police Department, because there are some unknown issues, uh, as far as the, the types of traffic, who win that traffic and the type of trucks. And, and that makes it, and when you're just dealing with cards, we can understand that, but big trucks, uh, uh, and trap trucks are not, they're not quiet at all. They're all diesel and, so there, there are some issues. Um, they may, we may have to, may have to look, I'm looking at it, and we may have to come up with some noise abatement, uh, around that facility.
Excuse me, John. On this here, they don't say trash trucks at all.
Okay.
There's nothing there that says trash trucks, you know, I mean, a box truck is one thing.
Well, it doesn't, excuse me, yeah, okay. It says trucks, okay, and, and they don't define trucks and it's, and that's a problem that we have to, you know, we have to sort of feed, fit into and look at the situation, okay, and try to, we try to get everything to work. Now, the planning board is, I haven't said this in a while, but the planning board is the board of permitted uses. And this is to the extent there's a permitted use and, and, uh, you know, if we did nothing, it'd be, you know, uh, they would get the approval right away, so that's why you have the planning board. So, but, but what we can do is a couple of things, is I'd like to see the traffic study. And that regard, uh, we'll take a vote on that, and then, and then we'll take and, uh, set up a site walk where the board will actually go out there on a day and, and look at the site with the contractor and, uh, not only, I'd like to have somebody there from, uh, A and B Tire, but also Harvey, so that we can ask them questions and we'll coordinate a date, you know, on that through the department.
And the public is welcome to.
And then, then we, you'll get a notification of when that is. So then we will actually go to the site, we'll look at it and try to get a better idea.
We need to determine the sidewalk today.
What's that?
We do determine the date and time.
Yeah, we're gonna try to do that, okay, and I'm just letting people know in generally what we're gonna do, okay?
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, we have no objection to, to, to the site walk and no objection to working on the traffic study.
Uh-huh.
The, the concern I have is, and we have no objection to the about being at the site.
Uh-huh.
But the, the, there can't be any discussion of the project relative to the disposition of what we're gonna do. We can't, we can't get into an open meeting law issue.
Right.
No, you can't, no, I realize that.
So I just wanna, I just wanna point that out.
Typically, what we have.
Just so, more, more so that the abouters know that they won't be able to ask questions back and forth, because it's a public meeting, a public, um, meeting violation.
Open meeting violation.
So we have to be very careful.
Yeah.
You know, we can talk back.
You know, we can talk back.
But we can continue the public hearing and then your issues can be raised at the public hearing.
Here, and then.
We're not done tonight, we're not done tonight.
And then we can at least show you our, well, where our properties are.
Exactly. So you'll be, we'll go there, you'll go there, you can show us where your properties are. We're gathering information, okay? But I can't have any definitive, okay? And, and it has to be, and we have to post it so that we have in the meeting and all that. Because the, the state has strict, and that becomes an open meeting, okay?
So are you, are you proposing to continue this meeting to the site walk?
No.
Or are you proposing to, it was not a meeting, it's just a site view.
Just a site view, right.
And then come back and continue this meeting.
Does that need to be posted?
It has to be posted on, on Citi Hall and on the website.
Yeah. Has to be posted.
But it doesn't get mailed out?
Uh, how about hours of operation, because that could have an impact too. I mean, can we get, you know, not just, I think, but an actual hours of operation and, you know, what the flows are?
Yeah, we'll get some more detail from Harvey directly and I think that what we'll do is we'll coordinate that with the traffic study because they're gonna need that information as well. But yeah, we can, we can.
Okay. So at, at this point, I, there were two motions. The first motion that we should have is that we procure the request from the police department that the traffic study be initiated.
All right, I'll make that motion.
But this, we're not, we're not.
But we're not, we're not, we didn't even close the hearing.
Not, not moderating yet.
No, we can't, we can't close the hearing.
So we can't. We're gonna continue the hearing, so we won't do any of this yet, but we are requesting that.
Yeah, but you need a mo.
I make a motion that we, that.
Did we request?
Request the traffic study.
That's correct.
You know, in accordance with the, you know, whether the department had comments, we would accept that.
Yeah, right. I have a motion made and seconded to request a traffic study. Okay, for the police department. Do I have any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Roll call, roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Patrick Perlo.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chakoni.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Jason Perry excused, Tom Karen excused, Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes, okay. Uh, the second one is that we schedule a, a site walk.
For when?
Uh, and that's what we're gonna try to discuss now. What's the date?
Do we need to do it after hours in the evening or do we do it during the day?
When I'd be, when I'd be guys like, you know, it's already.
Yeah, it's better, we're losing an hour.
Can we do it at four?
In two weeks.
Well, that's the one then.
Listen, you schedule it, I'll do my best to get there.
Okay.
I can't even tell you how many things I can do.
Yeah, I know.
He's good.
Fifteen kids under the age of nine.
Right.
And that's the one we're going with.
I could do it Monday or Tuesday, it's hard if you want to do that.
Look at him.
Monday or Tuesday?
Uh, that's we.
I'd be all right with that.
Next week?
Some of the better problems, be good, please.
I have city council on Monday, Monday night, so I'm gonna have to get my daughter to go back.
Oh, we have city council.
I can't do Monday, I have another meeting.
So Tuesday would be better.
I actually can't do either next week, so.
What's that?
I have meetings both ways next week.
How about Wednesday?
I can't do Wednesday, I have class at nine on Thursday.
I can do Tuesday at four.
I have a meeting until five on Tuesday in Pittsburgh, so I can't.
You can't get this.
City Council.
How about Monday at three?
Monday, Monday at three I can do, I have a meeting at five.
How about Monday at three?
Monday at three.
I mean, I mean.
That'll work. That's Monday.
Yeah, Monday at three.
Monday at three, a week from today at three. I'm just, I have my phone in the car, because I don't.
We'll make it three thirty.
I don't want to be like the mass.
It's okay. Three thirty.
Yeah, I have a meeting at five, but I didn't do it at four, I just made that call.
Yeah. No, the three, that'd be, yeah, we should take this.
Three o'clock on the twenty-fourth.
Shouldn't take more than a half hour to decide.
So I could do four then, if you would, you tell me. I hope that doesn't matter to you.
Three or three thirty?
Three.
I, I was here.
Three thirty.
Three thirty.
It's kind of enhanced.
Three thirty?
I might have to bring a little one.
It's okay. Bring candy bars.
We have a sound theater, well.
Okay, that is, I mean, will everybody else? Okay.
All right, that's.
Motion would be made for a site walk on Monday at three thirty. What's the date on that?
The twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Patrick Perlo.
Yes.
I'll roll call.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chakoni.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Jason Perry excused, Tom Karen excused, Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes. Okay. So that will make it.
And you wanted the hours of operation, right?
Right. So with that, the activities that were taken, these, the open post meeting and the special permit are continued. So I need a motion on both of those individually.
So what day? Do you want to do the seventh of November?
When you have, that's the next meeting, yeah.
Well, that'll have time to get the traffic study?
We're gonna try it.
Try, okay.
I'm, I'm, yeah, so, so one of my questions is gonna be relative to scope. There are huge levels of traffic studies that we could do. What I was, what I would propose is that we, we try to develop some sort of an existing, um, traffic analysis based upon what's there now and to have it compared to the proposed. It might not be of, and I was, we're not gonna go up in traffic counts, we're gonna use mass DOT information relative to what's going on at Willard and Lancaster at the lights and.
You should have that already.
Site specific.
At the lights, yeah, that, mass DOT, some, there's very some information out there, it's right.
Yeah, and then you gotta go from there to site specific.
Correct, correct.
I mean, you're gonna add site specific, not just taking mass DOT.
It would be a traffic memo relative to the site based upon the existing uses on the site.
Right.
Okay, we won't be able to get existing traffic counts from that use because a lot of the vehicles and the operations have been moved off the site already. So we gotta get back to what it used to have, plug those numbers in, plug the new numbers in of what we're proposing. And then from there, give us an analysis, look at the intersections both at Willard and Central and Willard and Lancaster Street. We'll signalize, so we should have mass DOT counts and then we can kind of talk about what the impact of this give a better angle on, on the, on the workflow within the operational end of E L Harvey and kind of mash that all together.
Okay.
If you get that done for the seventh, I mean, to be honest, it would be a stretch. But I'd rather take the date and have to push than not have it available.
Okay, 'cause the date, you're, you're a better judge of that than I am.
Right.
So we'll set it at the seventh, if we have to continue it, then we'll continue it.
So just for the record, does this mean that the study is going to be presented at the meeting on the seventh?
No, I would get it due before that.
You'd get it before that, because packets go out the week before.
I should be able to do that, yeah, yes.
What time, on the seventh?
So you would need it by?
Monday, the thirty-first at noon.
Okay. That's important.
Stephanie will be here to manage it, so I will. What time?
Should we both be ready for the trick or treat?
I'll be in Hawaii.
I'll email it to you.
By the way, she won a trip to Hawaii.
Did she really?
I did.
What's the first?
So that's.
Available time on the seventh.
The seventh, what's the date, what's the time on that?
Um, on the seventh, we have six forty available.
So, there you go.
Okay. Motion is, in order for, continue the public meeting to November seventh at six forty.
Yep.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded, all favor say aye. Uh, roll call, sorry about that.
Dean, or Patrick Perlo.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chakoni.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Jason Perry excused, Tom Karen excused, Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
And now the other one for six forty-one.
Okay, and the public hearing for six forty-one, November seventh, uh, roll call.
Six forty-one, you said?
Yeah, six forty-one, November seventh.
Six forty-one. Okay, I forgot that. Patrick Perlo.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chakoni.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Jason Perry excused, Tom Karen excused, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Jake, John Siza.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, public hearing for city council petition, six dash two-three, to mend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unwanted vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Just for the record, Sal and I went before city council and presented this to them and gave them the background on it and the purpose of it. And they were mainly supportive, but it's been referred back to us for public hearing. There were two items that we, Sal and I, in doing.
Excuse me, please. Yeah, they had a discussion of.
There were two items that Sal and I, in looking at this further, decided that we wanted to edit, they're just two minor edits. One is, instead of calling it disassembly, I think it's called disassembly.
Disassembly.
And then, just to be congruent, it's called vehicle storage lot in definitions. It should be called vehicle storage lot on the chart and table uses. But other than that, Sal and I did not come up with any other edits that we want to bring to the board.
No, and, 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 you know, to add on to what Elizabeth was saying, uh, they know there's a problem. We brought it forward, you know, at the beginning of this, we thought it had nothing to do with us. So we brought it forward as best we could and a lot of them know where the problems are as well. So they just wanted, we didn't have input from all the boards, but we set up that subcommittee and we spoke to all the department heads of the boards. They didn't have, you know, like we had information in our packet about what the, you know, what the review was approved, disapproved or what their thoughts were. Mostly in conjunction with what we thought or what we presented, but they, they got to talk to the building inspector and who is the other person?
They wanted the building inspector to come to the meeting.
They wanted the building inspector to come to the meeting and someone else, because.
License, license. I think it was.
Licensing, yes, excuse me, licensing as well. And, and, and it boils down to, like we've been saying all along, enforcement, which is, is a responsibility they have to look into. So that's, they continued it, uh.
Until November twenty-eighth.
Yes.
So, yeah.
See, that's where we are.
All right. So we have a few changes that we want to recommend?
The just the two items.
No, they just added, they're, they're spelling edit and the other one is just a word donation and a table of uses, licensing, I believe.
To make it congruent, yeah.
To make everything.
Yes.
Hope a second, you have to continue this, to be honest.
No.
Well, we've discussed it, so we're all set with it. It just, with those changes, we just gotta recommend those changes back to the city council.
And it is, we recommend this and it's up to them to.
So moved.
Second, do I recommend the listed changes?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, and motion made and then seconded. Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Patrick Perlo.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chakoni.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
Yes, to do that.